Time is six o'clock. I call the meeting to the Otoka City Council order. Ask everyone to rise as we do the pledge of allegiance and the dedication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear holy father, we come to you today and just thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you, God, for just all the blessings you give us. God, I just pray that as we go through this meeting, God, I just pray for continued unity with our council, God, and that we just continue to do the best job that we can do. And I just, again, thank you, God, for the things that you do for us every day that sometimes we overlook. And I just pray, God, that we pay attention to those things. And I just pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Well, good evening to everyone. Thank you for joining us. At this time, with clerk call roll, please.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Cheryl.
Here.
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Pogue.
Here.
Mr. Kathy.
Here.
This again is the public comment time. This is anything that is not on the post agenda. You may address the board at this time. And hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion second rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting on January fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion second rule call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Well, city manager got much better looking this evening. I don't know what happened. Good evening, Assistant Chief.
Hello. I did not prepare this report. The city manager did. He's at the city manager's conference in Edmond through Friday, but I have one over his stuff and would entertain any questions if you'd have any.
I have several. I'm kidding. This report looks.
It's not nice. Fire away.
I'll motion to a first.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. I would say amazing job that the city employees did clearing all the roadways during the storms. Still get a lot of people thanking me for that. And I know that was a lot, a lot of effort to make that. It was impressive. It was impressive. So.
Yeah.
All right. Moving along. Item four, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting payment of purchase orders for the city of Otoka for the month of December, twenty twenty four.
I reviewed these earlier with the city manager this morning before he left. Everything is standard normal purchases and would recommend that they be approved.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have motion second rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item five, discussion and or possible action to approve or deny the purchase of a new twenty twenty six Ford F seven fifty dump truck in the amount of one hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars.
One hundred and two?
One hundred and two thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty cents.
Danny talked about this last.
This would be the second one. The first one was purchased in the special meeting. This would be, I think there's a twenty-two, somewhere twenty-two to twenty-four week build out time on this. So we'd be looking at a while before we get it. But this would be a state contract purchase. And good thing about this is it would be a second dump truck for city employees that does not require a CDL to operate. Pretty much all the crew could operate both of them. And I guess they have to go build the unit, then send it to the upfitters to have the bed installed and all those accessories.
And it'll look like that other one that.
Twin, twins and the other.
Yeah, it'd be essentially be a year difference, but basically the same. So.
Okay. I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number six, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the twenty twenty-five budget adjustments for the general fund. We have our treasurer with us this evening. Good evening, Ms. Kelly. Any notable changes, adjustments?
Most of the general fund was from grant monies that were received. So that was that increase because we can't budget for grants.
Right.
We did pretty good with grants this year.
Yes, we did.
If anybody doesn't have any questions, I'll recommend approving.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number seven, discussion and or action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh two to amend the general fund budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
This is just approving the changes that were made?
Yes.
Correct.
Almost to approve. I'll second.
Motion second rule call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number eight, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the twenty twenty-five budget adjustments for capital improvements.
And on this one, the sales tax that we estimated came in a little bit under and then all our expenses were less.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion second rule call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number nine, discussion and or action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh three to amend the capital improvements budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
Almost approved.
I'll second.
Have motion second rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Move down. Is there any council comments?
Yeah, I just have one question here. On the sales tax, was there anything, this increase over last year, was there anything last year that was weird? Like why, I don't think I've seen this big of an increase, sixty-eight thousand dollars coming over.
We had, well, a lot of it will depend on when the cutoff timeframe. It's, this is actually going to be December sales numbers.
Right, but still that's a.
It's a, it's a healthy gain over the previous year. So.
That's great.
Yeah. There's some random months in the year that there's a large uptick or downturn and I have never been able to decipher what causes that.
Sometimes you, it's really hard to find out. And I don't know if Kelly can go into the system and look, but sometimes you have companies in town working that will purchase supplies. And if they're delivered in the city limits, they have to pay sales tax in the city limits. You don't ever even know about it until it's reported.
Yeah.
In Colgate right now, they have that RIT or whatever company doing power line work. And they're purchasing lots of supplies and having it drop shipped in the city limits. And so they're having to pay some taxes on it. But it shows up in the revenue and lots of them don't even know about it till it happens. So it could be that or it just could be lots of sales.
That's great.
Any other council comments?
I mean, I just, it's just.
Did you say Kelly?
I can look and see if there's anything odd for that month.
Of course, we wouldn't know. We can't get down to the specifics of what it was, but still it's.
I can tell you if there's something odd or not. I can contact the tax commission if there is.
Tell them we're definitely not complaining at all, at all. So, okay, there's no other council comments. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Next meeting of the evening, the Otoka Municipal Authority. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Cheryl?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. And this is public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Uh, have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Do we need to make a revision to the agenda in the council at the next meeting? Because those were budget items for twenty twenty-five and this one's budget items for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I didn't catch that. Yeah.
No, it's fine. We'll just note in our minutes that it is twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-four.
For twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we're adjusting the year end for twenty twenty-four, but I was reading the agenda. It said twenty twenty-five.
I guess I did get it changed over on the, on the general fund one. Cause I have it on AMA. It said twenty twenty-four, but it looks like it was ahead of twenty twenty-five.
Yellow items five, uh, six, seven and eight. Since fiscal year twenty twenty-five, it's twenty twenty-four. It wasn't feeling right when I was seeing it, but then I thought, yep.
I still didn't get it. So. Can we add in there an amendment to?
City attorney, we got this corrected? Okay. Moving along. Thought I'd bring in someone's agenda. Item number two, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting payment of purchase orders for the Otoka Municipal Authority for the month of December, twenty twenty-four.
Almost approved. I'll second.
Motion is second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and action regarding approving or rejecting the twenty twenty-four budget adjustments for the Otoka Municipal Authority.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh four to amend the Otoka Municipal Authority budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Is there any trustee comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion is second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Uh, we're going to move the industrial authority meeting to the end and move on to the sports complex, the Otoka Industrial Facilities Authority meeting. Clerk call roll, please.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Cheryl?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. It's public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. And hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the sports complex manager's report. I'm assuming the fort would read cold, frozen and no activity.
Yeah, they have very little. Looking forward to spring.
Looking forward to spring.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Is that correct? Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion is second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Otoka Industrial Facilities Authority for the month of December, twenty twenty-four.
Almost approved. I'll second.
Have motion. Second rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the twenty twenty-four budget adjustments for the Otoka Industrial Facilities Authority.
On this one, it, we had the sixty-three thousand dollar decrease. So it just means we came under the budget. Decrease? Yeah, and the decreases.
Was it decreasing revenue or expenses?
Both.
So we actually only decreased it eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, because like the lodging tax came in a little lower than what we budgeted, the ballpark charges did and advertising, but then concession, gate fees and registration fees came in over. So the difference was the eighteen thousand and fifty-one dollars.
But it's still less than what we budgeted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is less than what we budgeted. Their expenses were also less than what we budgeted.
Okay. Thank you. I'll approve.
Yeah, I'll second.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion and or action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh six to amend the Otoka Industrial Facilities Authority's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Is there any trustee comments? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion is second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Uh, next meeting of the evening, the Otoka City Airport Authority Trust. Would you clerk call roll, please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Cheryl?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. Okay, this is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Uh, at this time, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Rule call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. So we move into our next meeting, the Otoka City Emergency Management Authority. Would the clerk call roll?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Cheryl?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. Uh, this is the public comment times. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda. Item one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. And this closes out this trust now that we've approved the minutes from the prior meeting, correct?
We will have no more City Emergency Management Authority trust meetings. She can get rid of her yellow paper.
We're mixed it up.
I only made enough copies to do this.
All right. All right. Now that I've said all that, I lost my place. Did we get a motion in a second and a real call? I did. Okay, I thought we did. It's been that kind of day from one meeting to the next. Now I just need to adjourn. Does anybody want to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion in a second. Let's, let's do it. Now we got rid of you, Travis.
Ms. Pogue?
But we did.
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Sorry, short circuit. Okay, last meeting of the evening, the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority. Would the clerk call roll, please?
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Here.
Sorry, I didn't catch.
I'm here.
Okay. Uh, Ms. McGee?
Here.
And Mr. Kathy?
I'm here. Well, I ran it off in the bar ditch after that last little mistake. I got everybody messed up. All right. After the roll call, this is public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. And hearing none, we'll move down to business agenda. Item number one, discussion and or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report. Does our gentleman have anything?
It's a brief report, but basically it has fielded quite a few calls for spec building and stuff that they're looking for, buildings that are already constructed. You know, uh, we did have the potential on the, what I call the Mercer building. It's five thousand square feet. There's many interest on that, but you know, could potentially expand it. But, uh, just kind of plugging along at it. But now he's got some prospects, but just kind of feeling them out.
Okay.
Brian, do you know where we're at on the housing? That's the Ford bit though. What Mercer?
No, the Mercer's the old, the transfer station out in the heavy industrial block.
I think they're calling it something else now. Mercer was one of the first one.
Yeah, that was the, the original tenant that was, the building was built for. Uh, I'm sorry, what was your question?
House and projects?
Uh, they should be underway except for the eight inches of snow. They have all their surveying done and they're ready to start breaking ground.
Excellent.
So the, uh, the eight inch to ten inch snow kind of slowed that down just a touch. And then, uh, then it went to that. And now you can't dig in the ground because the ground's frozen. So they'll, it sounds like they'll be underway shortly.
That's good.
I talked to the, one of the developers the other day called to give me a quick update on that. So thank you for asking. They, they are ready to get underway and excited to get underway. So.
Okay, I'm glad because you know, I, uh, housing just.
Huge, huge, huge need here. Okay.
Everywhere.
Yeah, everywhere, everywhere. Um, any other questions, comments on the director's report?
Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and or action on approving or rejecting payment of purchase orders for the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority for the month of December, twenty twenty-four.
Just a curiosity question. What's Civic Dynamics? It was on all of them, but.
I believe that's, is that not?
That's, that's the company that is helping us with the review of our, um.
Code, code books.
Our code book.
Okay. So I haven't seen it before then, right?
You what?
We haven't seen it before?
No.
Okay. I kept thinking that that looked new, but I couldn't figure out if I was just, almost to approve. I'll second.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
So if we need update or whatever, we just need to get with you or on the, on the code books?
Yeah, I need to sit down with the mayor one day this week and, um, I've, I've got some stuff I need to get from him to send to him so he can keep working on it. So.
Very good. Just let me know. Item number four, discussion in action regarding approving or rejecting the twenty twenty-four budget adjustments for the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion in action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh five to amend the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Almost approved.
I'll second.
Have a motion. Second rule call, please.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, an executive session as authorized by Title twenty-five State Statute three oh seven C eleven for the purposes of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property financed creation of proposal to entice business located within the city of Otoka where public disclosure of the matter would discuss would interfere with the development of products or service or would violate the confidentiality of the business. At this time, do I hear a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, do I hear a motion to enter back into open session?
I make that motion, I'll second.
The motion is second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
On return from executive session, item one, acknowledgment of minutes of executive session, minutes were taken. And as for that, is there any trustee comments? Hearing none?
I will say this, just to everybody knows, the TOPPS program for the stage that we joined in with Jay McAdams, the first person didn't, he was kind of slow playing us to get the stage numbers back and we called and he's not going to do it, that person isn't, we have another guy that's really on board with getting things done, came down within an hour of when we, the other guy quit. The other guy was from Oklahoma City and I think we were just a small job and so, but this other person is from Talaquaw, he was doing, he was in Cribs at the school and so anyway, he's on it and seems like somebody that's going to go faster. So hopefully we'll get some stage numbers back and they'll be reasonable.
Hope so, hope so. Awesome, thank you, any other trustee comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion, I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. Miki?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Thank you all, we adjourn for the night.